Okay, all right. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the April twenty twenty three meeting of the Saint Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. It's great to have everyone. We do have a quorum of trustees so we can move forward. Why don't we start with some introductions? My name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president of the library board. And if I could ask Dorothy to go next, and we'll go around this way.
Dorothy Waters, trustee.
Oh, Sharon Fitzsimmons, trustee.
John Walters, trustee.
Tressa Stetlock, treasurer.
Thanks, everybody. We are going to adjust the agenda just a little bit to move the celebrations from item number six up to right now, just because we have one of our honorees with us. And we want to celebrate her and let her carry on with her day. Michael.
Well, thank you so much. And we recently conducted a study of the flow of materials between the libraries, not just between our three branches, but between the libraries at Calvert and Charles as well, conducted by Smurla to try to increase the efficiency of the route. We've been having instances where if one of the drivers is not well, or the truck has a mechanical problem, deliveries were not being done. So this study is undertaken in order to try to see some alternates and ways we could increase the efficiency. And we don't yet have a solution to that. The kind of long bow ambitious solution would be to get a different truck and have two doing routes. But that would be substantially more expensive down to just changing the order of the branches. But that involved quite a bit of work for our staff. They had to count all the boxes coming in, all the boxes going out, and basically report back on that. And so we did have four staff members who were quite instrumental in organizing that effort. And one of them is here, and that is Mary Beth, and Mary Beth will read your certificate. But the others are Becca Howell here at Lexington Park, Nicole Vega at Charlotte Hall, and Kit Kertocher at Leonardtown. And so to Mary Beth, we're organizing, procuring staff, and helping to make a delivery study run as smooth as possible. Great work on pulling this together and getting this organized for your traffic access. We thank you for your outstanding service. And I'll give you your certificate later. Thank you, Mary Beth. Have a good morning.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Have a great day.
You sure you don't want to make a speech? Nobody ever wants to make a speech. All right. Moving on. Thank you, Michael. We can move on to the approval of the March twenty twenty three minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments about those? We can entertain a motion to approve them.
I'll move to approve the March minutes as presented.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Sharon.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries.
Just for the record, our vice chair, John Johnson, has arrived and is part of the quorum.
Welcome, John.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have the approval of the monthly expense ledgers, the EALs. Any comments or questions about these?
I do have a question about something just over halfway down on page two. Everything up to that point and everything after that point has minuses. But I see twenty-two, eight, eighty, not. Is that not an expense?
It looks like the column just simply wasn't wide enough.
There's a little minus above that that total, but that is there.
Just the column is too narrow. So it didn't, yeah.
Thank you.
So it wrecked.
Can I ask about the Walker display expense at the bottom of page one?
Yes, the Walker display is the grant that we got from the Arts Council to create a display of art at Leonardtown and Lexington Park. So that was for the equipment and the hanging items. So they are working on putting that together for, I believe, April or early May.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, that was paid for by a grant completely.
All right, we can entertain a motion to approve these EALs.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Tressa.
Second.
Thank you, John. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, motion carries. And now it's been on the agenda for months, the eagerly awaited now quarterly treasures report. Tressa.
So you have in front of you the treasures report. It covers January, February, March activity for the Vanguard account. I'm not going to read each line. You can look at them yourselves. But basically, we do actually have an increase in our fund balance from December, the end of December through the end of March. So the original Vanguard account increased by one thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars and seventeen cents. And the Rudolph account increased four seventy-one, seventy over the last three months.
Thank you, Tressa.
That's completely a thank to Sockmark.
Do we need to move to approve this report?
Accept it?
No. No, but I would like to ask, Michael, we've got new people here. Can you give them a little history of these two funds? Up when they came on board and what they're supposed to do, et cetera?
Well, these have been here for quite some time, and they predate me. But there were two sources of funds for the board at one point. And one was a rather large grant that took place, I believe, in two thousand and three. And it was intended to fund a intern for the library for each summer reading program. And so that corpus, I believe it's the original, it's not supposed to fall below fifty thousand to sort of honor that grant. The other source of funds was before we had a foundation, people could donate, and they still can donate specifically to a branch. And that, in fact, frequently happens, especially here at Lexington Park. We have some very generous donors who come in and write a check for Lexington Park Library. And so we put that into a fund for Lexington Park for their use. But if it was just a general donation that went to the library as a whole, then it went into a fund that was making up part of this. And so that's where those fundings come from. It is still the case that if somebody walks in to write a check for the library and not the foundation, and they don't identify a branch that we could put it towards one of these funds, that simply hasn't happened for a long time. People now donate to the foundation for the most part. So that's where these funds came from.
So if if we have an intern every summer, and I don't know that we do, approximately what amount is being wasted away on the sixty-two nine?
Well, funny you would mention that, although we will take issue with the term wasted, because that's on our agenda. We'll discuss that later.
All right. Thank you, Tressa. We can move on to the Smurla report, turning things over to John.
Can I ask what the difference is between the original and the Rudolph account? Oh, got it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Got it. Yeah, we just met last Monday, the first in-person meeting for me there. We had a closed session and obviously won't go into the details, but just a bit of compensation and classification study, possible future action. Staff is considering holding a day of service with the community project, and we'll hear more about that later, I think. And the legislation that was dealing with the bylaws for the regional organizations came down to the wire. There was a last-minute revision that said that the wards would only need one community member. So as far as Smurla is concerned, there would be no changes needed in the bylaws at this time. Which rolls over to the issue, you know, Beth Roth has just stepped down. You know, so the board is seeking a community member. You know, I was asked to bring that back here, and they suggested submitting three names for their consideration. And I am going to email the application form, which has just been updated.
But change came from Montgomery County, from a representative who was not affected by this at all. So we were somewhat taken aback. I believe he was well-intentioned. His thought was that if we opened up Smurla's board to people who had not gone through the vetting process to be on one of the county boards, that there would be the possibility of somebody coming in who did not share library values. And as I say, we were somewhat surprised. In fact, this change may make it more difficult. Let's say one of the three county boards, as we have seen happen in many states across the country this year, it changes its makeup completely in a way that does not support the library and wishes to censor the collection and censor the program. We've seen at least four libraries actually be closed under those circumstances. If that were to happen here, then then the Smurla board would be even more likely to have trouble. But that's the amendment. We may look at a change for that next year. But for now, we would be seeking another member from this board to also serve on the Smurla board.
Well, there's just one other item was that Smurla's issue in RFP for delivery and sorting services.
So where things stand now, Smurla is looking for another board member from our group to join.
I've heard from the community since Beth Roth was a community member. You know, the Trosen Coward already have a, you know, one community member and one member from their local trustees.
All right. And I'm sorry, what was that about? Three names?
That was their suggestion.
Everybody wants options.
I'm sorry, I got lost in the math there. I thought every library system was providing three names. Is it true now?
That's it's three names for our particular submitted as trustees to our commissioners, but for Smurla, it's different.
Yeah, that was merely their suggestion that we could provide three names of community members.
But for sitting on Smurla, it's two names per jurisdiction.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
It does not have to, Smurla's does not have to change the consistency of their board.
Okay, so just trying to understand what we actually need to do. We need to identify a community member, perhaps someone from our board to join Smurla, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't believe it has to be. Another trustee would simply be a community member.
Okay. Okay.
That's the way the legislation was written. It basically leaves the Smurla's structure unchanged. One local trustee, one local community member per county.
John, a question, to what extent has Smurla asked the three library boards to provide names? Is this something they're going to advertise for themselves, or is this something that they are delegating to this board?
I believe I was asked to bring the request back here, and I can clarify that with Ashley to be sure.
Okay, well, I serve on a lot of other boards and knew a few folks that I could suggest. So if it comes to us, then then I will ask around some. Thank you.
Okay. For anybody that's watching, how often do they meet and where?
It's typically been every other month. As has happened, the first quarter was fairly busy, so we're going to have a short meeting in May. And then the next one after that would be in July, typically at the Charlotte Hall office, which is in the same building as the Charlotte Hall Library, as as you know, and and it's been, I think, second Monday at typically at five. I'm sorry. What's the, I think it was the second Tuesday. In this case, we simply had moved it to ten AM for this month.
The second Tuesday.
Yeah, I can confirm that with my calendar here since I have it on.
Okay, and the next meeting's in May.
Yes.
All right. If folks could think about people in their networks, or if anyone has a burning desire to also join Smurla, please keep that in mind.
John. Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other Smurla updates from your end?
Not at this time.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Turn it over to Michael for the director's report.
Thank you, Michael. We're going to move into the third quarter statistics and staff turnover report. And everything's looking very good. As a executive summary, we are comparing to last year at this time, when we were already seeing a fair amount of return back from the pandemic, although it was very far from over. So we're seeing that overall for the quarter compared to last year, we are seeing an increase in our circulation with Lexington Park doing very well on the mobile hotspots. And our digital circulation being up, not necessarily as much for the year as in some past years, which is good because frankly, we're at capacity for what we can handle very well. So basically, a ten percent increase there. So for circulation and overall increase of about five percent over last year at this time. In terms of our events, that's where we're going to start seeing probably not apples-to-apples comparisons, because we're going to have had more in-person events this year, as you see by the increase of over a thousand percent in that. So we're back largely, especially with children's programming, to live events. And so one hundred and twenty-nine percent increase over last year, and for the year, one hundred and ten percent overall. Attendance incredibly, again, no surprise there, just because the in-person programming, while we have some programs like author events, author readings that do extremely well virtually. Many of the others don't do as well virtually. So we try to streamline the programs so that those that will succeed in a virtual format, we can continue that as an option. But especially the children's programming, we're glad to see people back. Meeting room use up, visitor use up. So really, computer use up, our online presence up. So things are doing very well right now at your library as we continue to emerge from the pandemic. And I'd say the only sort of area of concern would be at the very bottom of the second page, you see the tri-county circulation. This is perhaps just friendly competitiveness on our part, but we would very much like to keep our overall lead in circulation for print materials over the other two counties, but they're gaining. And part of that may be because we emerged a little bit earlier from the pandemic than the other two counties, especially Charles, which at this time last year still had quite a bit of closure going on. But also just because their overall budgets are starting to tell with more materials coming forward from those two locations. So again, that's that's not a real concern, just so much as we like to be number one. Any questions about the statistics for the quarter? And there are other sheets that go into it month by month, but I think we're fine with just the overview.
I have two questions. One, to clarify the mobile hotspot, that's a natural device that hooks up to the cellphone network and provides Wi-Fi service at the home?
Yes, that is correct. And we've been circulating those initially under a grant now, but for quite a few years, and actually had them before the pandemic. But we've increased the number that we have and the capacity that we have so that they offer more unlimited data. The primary limit on those devices is that no single cellphone provider provides access that's a hundred percent reliable throughout the county. So sometimes people will get them home, discover that they will not connect in their area, but that's no fault of the device. It's just the same if you take your cellphone around the county. If you go down below where the Potomac Valley starts down into, for example, the Colton's Point area, you'll find suddenly you get no cellphone service.
And the other question was Binge Pass. I understand it's part of Hoopla. Is that a relatively new feature?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Binge Pass, which I understand is part of Hoopla. Is that relatively new? It's under the Hoopla stats on page two.
Those are the bonus burrows, which are essentially books and audiobooks and comic books and things that people can borrow for free without charging the library. So that is a fairly new feature that Hoopla has brought. And so they'll select certain books for that month. And then they, any of our users can use those books, but it doesn't actually charge us money. So they are wonderful. We really encourage people to use those ones.
And that is correct.
And so the Binge Pass then is kind of additional to the bonus checkouts. And it is an entire collection mostly of nonfiction videos, like kind of like the Great Courses model, so that people can watch multiple of those great courses within a one-week pass. So it's a it's a really amazing service that people could take advantage of.
Thank you.
And so while that was offered last year, this time is relatively new to Hoopla, so we are.
I have a follow-up question about the mobile hotspots. Is Lexington Park running out? Are there times when they don't have any available for checkout?
Yes, occasionally there'll be a waiting period at all the libraries. They especially, it would seem, times of vacation like spring break, there's a high demand, but Amy, please go ahead.
Yes, they are pretty constantly on hold. It, I can't remember a time when we have had one just sitting on the shelf waiting for somebody who would like to come in and get one there. They are very constantly on hold. And we communicate with customers very frequently about them because they're very interested.
Yes, I actually needed one today for this meeting because our outreach is using mine, and they are all on hold, so.
So, yes, that, to answer your question, yes.
Is there a plan then to perhaps reallocate some of the Charlotte Hall ones down to the Lexington Park branch? If this trend continues.
What I would try to prefer to do and the LSTA grant season is coming up, might be to try to get more and not necessarily limit them at any one place. But I would say that probably the need is going to be greatest here, but also this is, you know, in some cases now tied with Leonardtown, our busiest branch, so we're going to see high demand here.
Also, just so you know, the cost of those is there's the one-time cost of actually paying for the Wi-Fi device. And then we have an ongoing yearly cost when we add more. So Sarah does that, our virtual services coordinator, and she's constantly monitoring them to see if we need to replace any and when and if we can buy more. She has a very well control of her budget, and she tracks it and knows when and if she can buy more.
Laura, did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to add that Sarah does reallocate them between branches quite often, so she'll watch the trends. Because we do see peaks at different branches. So she has moved some from different branches to other ones, depending on the popularity. And also that we have two different carriers. We have both Sprint and Verizon. So she also moves those around because depending on, like, there was just a new Verizon tower built, so that like changed where that those ones worked. And so like Linda said, Sarah's been doing a wonderful job tracking use. But they are also, you can place holds and get them from other branches as well. So if you needed to.
I'd still like to, I'd still like to get more.
Michael, two questions, if I may. When the mobile library comes online, will that go under outreach, or are you going to treat it as a branch for statistics?
We'll probably, we'll want to, we'll want to track what's happening specifically to the mobile library, so that will probably be added as a branch. And under our computer system, Polaris, it will be a separate branch.
Okay. And second question is, do you anticipate that that will actually perhaps increase circulation or wind up scavenging from brick-and-mortar locations?
We are pretty confident that's going to increase circulation. It is specifically targeting, and next month, we're going to have the mobile library team present to you, including a schedule. So far, it's tentative of places, but we have several already located where it is difficult for the people there to get to a physical library. So at Cedar Lane, for example, although they've now got a new van, and that's that's great for them. Many of the residents do not have transportation, but we're going to stop there. At Spring Ridge Elementary, which is down Route two thirty-five here, several miles, we did a visit there. It's an extremely diverse school. And many of the students there do not have the wherewithal to get here in Lexington Park library very, very well. So we've set up a stop close to that. And we anticipate then increasing circulation and not cannibalizing from the branches. That may happen to a limited degree, but I don't think you're going to see the branch circulation slowing down nearly as much as you see the mobile library increasing.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question about the visitors section, the yellow part at the bottom of page one? Under Charlotte Hall, it looks like we are up for the quarter nine percent, but overall for the fiscal year, you know, we're down five percent. I was just wondering, do you have a sense of like when in the year those visitor numbers are dropping, or kind of what might be the impetus behind that?
No.
Okay.
Fair, to be perfectly honest. We take a look, of course, at Charlotte Hall, it's a little bit difficult to do apples-to-apples at this point because the of the presence and now the absence of the farmer's market that was there. And many people who say worked at the farmer's market went and out at Charlotte Hall. So I think at this point, we're comparing a time when the farmer's market is not being considered. And so that may factor into these. I think we'll have a better idea when we're fully out from where the farmer's market was an effect was an effect on the, so I think last fall, for example, the farmer's market was, we were comparing the time it was there. So we'll sort of take a look at Charlotte Hall and see what's going on with it. I don't think that there's any decrease in interest in the branch at this point.
Got it. So in about another year, you think there'll be a new baseline, which will give us a better measurement?
I think so. And probably already as early as next fall, we should be able to get a better idea.
Thank you.
If we look at the aggregation of the data, though, where we're looking at visitors down and circulation not changing in a lot of cases, or barely changing for Charlotte Hall. So thinking of those two things together, I don't think it can necessarily be attributed to a change in people coming in due to the farmer's market. Or I mean, like, proximity of people there.
That is, the people coming in, now they weren't circulating items. They were just coming in and out of the door, and they get counted. So, so yes, I think you're right about that.
One other thing that happened at Charlotte Hall is they did have some staff turnover like everyone else, but they were hit harder by that. And so there was less programming in the fall and winter than they normally have. So if you actually just look back a couple of months to, they had some negative visitor counts in the late fall and winter. I don't know if you guys have those in your packet this time, but our sat's going back a year. visitor counts in the late fall and winter. I don't know if you guys have those in your packet this time, but our stats going back a year. But they are kind of becoming full staffed again. And so they are catching up, hopefully. Hopefully, we'll see those visitor counts continuing to rise.
Thank you.
Any other questions, please? Well, in that case, let's look at this, the turnover rate calculation for the quarter. And you'll see that it's sixteen point six percent on the year. It is four point two percent for the third quarter of the fiscal year. And I I wouldn't say that four point two percent, if it were an annual number, would be all that problematic. I'm not happy with the sixteen point six. But I do, as you'll see compared to the fall, we are very much trending down. And obviously, there's a lot of reasons for turnover at this point. Economic ones such as inflation and our inability in some cases to compete with places that offer better terms. There is some movement caused by, for example, one of the March separations was a long term employee here whose husband was transferred to Texas for the base. So I am, for the moment, at least, less concerned than we were in fall, but we still would not want to see anything like a twenty percent turnover for the year, but it's certainly better than the forty percent we had the year before. Moving on to the budget review then, seventy seven percent of the year has elapsed incredibly enough. And basically largely within expectations for where we are now. Slightly down in the total personnel services in health services, but that's sort of dependent on when we're paying out for the health insurance. We are seeing, as we've noted before, increases in electricity, water, sewer, lands and telephone services that we'll have to rebudget for next year. The mobile library did have some funding assigned for it, which obviously we're probably not going to dip into this year. So that will be something that we will try to use to offset any mobile library expenses that that are happening so far. But it may also then go out to other places. We do have a slight overdraft in publicity.
The publicity is not over anymore. We we had to allocate the summer reading T shirts. And we had to have a discussion as to where. So I had just dropped them into Laura's budget. And I've reallocated them, so she is not over budget.
Okay, thank you. I I should point out that this came from earlier this month and and Linda took a very well earned vacation. So these are not figures as of today.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for that line. What pages are on?
You're on page two. Under operating supply, I I'm sorry, under operating supplies, third, third down. So as I say, I think by and large, we're we're doing okay, some slight overages. And we'll need to do some adjusting before the end of the year. But if you look so far at the grand total expenses at seventy two percent, we're not over budget and we are pressing to make sure that the circulation collection, which is at sixty three percent, as we've discussed before, in some cases, there's much more encumbered than is spent where we've we've said, okay, we've ordered it. We're just waiting for it to arrive to invoice it. So I'm anticipating that that will all get spent this year to just to make sure that our 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 library users have as many books to choose from as is possible.
The overage in the digital collection, was that an increase to an annual cost?
It's at the bottom of page two.
So we anticipate or we anticipated that. And so Sarah's budget is actually digital collections, digital contracts, virtual services and virtual contracts. So we kind of get do our best to figure out what we think she's going to spend, but we will move that money within her budget as needed. And she knows when she has an overage in one, she doesn't go over unless she knows she has is going to have an underage in another. So we'll move it. We'll ask for a line item move at the end of the budget cycle for the rest of her funds.
When when is this report typically generated?
Well, typically it's generated right before the board meeting, so it would have been earlier this week. But in this case, it's from the start of the month.
I generated this one, I believe, on the fourth, whatever the last day of the EALs was. The third, because I went on vacation on the fifth and I wasn't going to be processing any bills before Tuesday when I returned. And so there wouldn't have been any changes in this budget until after I needed them, I needed to get this to you.
And I was the one that I just checked the bills.
Yes.
Last month, we had improved, we had approved moving fifty thousand over from the fund balance. Is that money incorporated in this?
Yes, you'll see it on the mobile library supply budget adjustment line.
And that that was for the mobile library, yes.
Top of page.
Page three.
Uh, thank you.
Mobile library supplies, six, five, two, zero, zero.
Thank you very much.
Any any further questions about where we are on that?
I think we're good. Thank you, Michael.
If you look at the sheet, you'll see that what the schedule for the rest of the year is, you had suggested moving to the second Friday of each month. And there were some conflicts with that. So this will be the schedule. I think is best, but there's some play if you wish to. So for example, on May twelfth next month, that's the Maryland Library Association Conference. And I am presenting at that conference that day in person. And Mary Ann is at that conference. So we didn't really have anybody here to run a meeting with you. So we moved it back to the nineteenth. So there's that. And then the rest of it's fairly consistent with that second Friday. The locations as no, I'll go ahead and talk about that now. Leonard Town's meeting room was never, the AV equipment was never finished during the construction process. And the contractor who was assigned to that has not finished it. That's not our contract. That's with the county. The county is simply not paid them. But they're not making it good. So we have bids out and this is a county process. It's not ours to finish the AV equipment in that meeting room. And right now we're looking to see, do we have the technological ability for you to meet in that space? So we're hoping that next month would be at Leonard Town. But that is not certain. And I will let you know as soon as possible. It's probably going to end up having to be here. And the county does have at least one estimate so far of thirty eight thousand dollars of what that meeting space finishing would be in a, but again, that's a county matter. That's not a library matter.
Our IT staff, Tim and Jeff, are working. I think in the next week or so, they're going to meet at Leonard Town to see what we can work on. And so as soon as they figure out whether or not Leonard Town is feasible, we I'll have Michael send an email to you.
So we are, we are working on that. Charlotte Hall will work. So we are hopeful that it'll be Leonard Town. But again, I'll let you know as soon as possible where, but those are the dates and the county had posted at least one that was not right, but I will own that because I did not give them I the correct date. In one instance, I gave them the the Saturday instead of a Friday when I looked at my calendar, but these these are in fact right. So.
Also, just a reminder, Michael, the November one is also the third Friday because the second Friday is Veterans Day. It's Veterans Day.
Yes, that would be Veterans Day. Thank you for that.
I'm not asking for a change, but just as a heads up on the December one, I have a conflict with the two sheriff's boards. So as of right now, don't look for me on that date.
Thank you, John.
I expect.
Go ahead.
Expect to have a conflict next month. You know, I might be attending remotely.
Thanks, John.
Michael, you you've opened up something in my mind, a compartment. You were talking about that being a county problem because it's their building. To divert a minute, how are we doing on the plug for the mobile library from their building?
Oh, well, I was going to update on that. I don't mind doing it now. You'll see that as part of the upcoming mobile library budget. We submitted a request for fifteen thousand dollars and for the county to pick that up. And that has been taken to the county and I don't have a decision yet, but I'm pretty confident that they're going to be doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, speaking of the mobile library, we have another delay due to aluminum shortages to finishing the cab. And we are working closely. We have moved the mobile library date tentatively back to the end of July. And the tech ops folks who are going to finish the vehicle are meeting today. With any luck, they will give us notice that they can actually make an earlier date, but we will give you a final date for the ribbon cutting. Once we have that process all worked out and we've notified the county that that June date. The tech ops think they might be able to still meet the June date, but they're thinking more likely that the end of July is going to be a better time. So I will keep you updated on that process as soon as I can. And again, this is very much beyond their control. They have they they have brought their owners into negotiations with all these other folks and they're doing their best, but this does not involve any cost increase to us. So we will do our best with that and to get it in as soon as possible. That may, as we'll discuss later, affect when final bills on it will be due, but that will not affect the amount of the bills. Summer lunches, I'm going to turn over to Amy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we pause one moment?
Sure.
Sharon, David.
I was, I was trying to remember. I thought there was something about not being able to roll over the money after the fiscal year ends.
No, basically, money that's left to us at the end of a fiscal year goes into our fund balance. It's not like we have to give money back. So any money that is there remains there. And so we don't have to necessarily expect to pay out that invoice this year. We want to wait until such time as the vehicle's delivered, if it's delivered next fiscal year. But any money you put aside for it is still going to be money you've got to put aside.
Perfect.
Is that also true if it's grant money? Does that have an expiration date?
There's only one grant out remaining out and the large kind of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, A, has all been spent and B was due at the start of April. All that money had to have been spent, but it was. The remaining grant of fifty thousand dollars is state capital money. And I'm a little, I'll be honest, I'm a little frustrated about that because I've been communicating with them since last July and I've sent them more information in January and about three weeks ago, they said, where's the information? And I copied the email back from January and said, you know, I please help me. So I I'm I'm pretty sure we're going to get that money. But that has to be spent by July thirtieth. And what we'll do is get a invoice for fifty thousand dollars from tech ops to pay that money out. So all the money for grants do have to be spent this year unless you apply for an extension. I don't think we're going to have to do that.
Just to note, I feel your pain. I went through the same thing with those people on the electronic sign for the Naval Air Museum. They're horrible.
They they're very friendly, but I don't know if they're just understaffed or what, but it seems like follow up can be a problem. But I'm glad to know I'm not alone in that. Thank you. Amy, please go ahead.
Um, yes. So again, this year we are grateful to work with St. Mary's County Public Schools to be able to offer lunch at the library. And so it's a collaborative effort between the library and the schools. For the first several weeks of summer, we will have lunch for children and their families here at the Lexington Park Branch Monday through Friday. There's four weeks where summer school is in session and and the Lunch and Learn program there is in session over at George Washington Carver. So the Judy Center folks will take lunch from Monday through Thursday. The library will continue to serve lunch on Fridays and the last couple of weeks before school in August, we will again have lunch for children and their families from Monday through Friday. So it's a big effort on on behalf of our staff. But they're glad to do it. They have activities planned for kids and families while they're here to enrich their experience. And our librarians will also be going over to the Lunch and Learn program at George Washington Carver to do storytime and get folks engaged with the library.
Can you tell us, please, where that is on the on the budget sheet?
So that is, the lunches are paid for by a grant, a USDA grant that is managed by the St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Yeah, that's not one of our expenses.
Not one of our expenses. Exactly, exactly. And then our our intern is is usually a integral part of hosting that that lunch, especially since we have activities involved and other requirements that USDA has for being able to distribute those.
And interns is under an action item, so we'll be revisiting that.
And these are typically the younger grades?
Very often, but it can be anything, any children between, you know, one and eighteen. So often we'll try to engage our our teens and tweens that are here during the day because we we often have have them hanging out, you know, coming in to meet with friends and have fun. And so we try to engage them, bring them in as well.
Thank you, Amy. And we're always happy with the partnership with the school that's been been going on for 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 years now, and we're very happy to be continuing that. The FOL book sale and Sharon, thank you. I I know you have to leave for that. So thank you for your service to our friends. For members today, if you're a member of the FOL, and it's only fifteen dollars a year, so why not? Get first crack today at the books. And what we find is that, you know, people who are themselves booksellers will frequently come and and try to find things that they think they're going to be able to raise the price on. But it's also great for teachers who can, you know, come out and and get first crack at some things. And then tomorrow and Sunday, it's at the fairgrounds. We we did have unfortunately an issue with the weather, but there's still a lot of wonderful things to choose from there. And if you go, please thank the volunteers who were there. I'll say that the friends are struggling just a little bit and I I'll say that the friends are struggling just a little bit and I would met with them uh, earlier this week. And this is a huge production for them. There's an incredible amount of work that goes into it. And the, we're, we're looking for somebody who will sort of oversee all operations for a book sale next year. But what they're proposing is possibly setting up a bookstore that would be open every week. And doing a lot of sales that way, increasing their online sales and having correct monthly sales. At the libraries and meeting rooms rather than having the big book sale. It's, it's something that they're feeling is going to be difficult for them to keep going on. So uh, they haven't made that decision yet and will be. Uh, I volunteer to work with them on alternatives for how they're going to do their operations in coming years. And they're not expecting to um. Decrease their efforts, but if they have a bookstore, they may have to have an employee. Um, but if that results in an overall increase in sales, then certainly that's going to benefit the library. So I'll give you more details on that as the friends come together. Um, but do um, public, if you're listening, please come out for a book sale this weekend because it's going to benefit, as always, the library.
Michael, as a group, are they starting to age out of being able to volunteer?
Um, I, I'm not entirely comfortable talking about the age. But let's just say your, your question, um, your question is well taken. Yes, um, that. Uh, what they're finding and, and you know, I'm, I'm a member of several different organizations, uh, including, for example, Rotary. And what we're finding is um. That. Many service agencies and volunteer agencies are finding difficulty getting um. Younger members. And you know, at this point, we're defining younger members in their forties and fifties and. So uh, yes, that, that is something that they are um. They are working on. But it just seems to be a difference in, in how people are viewing service. And also people being extremely busy with their children. Um, you know, so if, if you have a child these days, and, and I see it when people apply for Rotary Service. Uh, scholarships, you know, the, the, the kid not only does sports, but they're doing community service themselves or volunteering at the hospital. They are, you know, volunteering with different agencies. They are, you know, reading to the elderly, they're reading to children. And so being a parent these days is, is even more of a full-time occupation. And I, I, some of you have kids and, and will back me up on that. Um, so I, I think it's just a, a difference in, in some ways in social trends, but yes. Um, we have provided the expenditure summary from the tentative county um, budget that is being presented to the public. Um, and you'll see that um, we did request one point three million. Um, we were given five hundred eighteen thousand. And I know you're all aware of that already, but I wanted to take the opportunity to thank our county commissioners for their generous support of the library. Um, if you look down at the percentages given to the different agencies, you'll see that we are one of the highest um, of the different agencies in terms of the percentage increase. And this is all very welcome. Um, Superintendent Scott Smith presented to my Rotary Club yesterday morning. I'm always jealous of the school budget, of course. But uh, that is no criticism of the schools, just so much as they have, you know, many thousands of employees. But and, and are doing a great job. Um, it's just that I, you know, always like. But um, we are um, very much uh, very thankful for the commissioners for this generous amount. And I'll be there on the evening of the twenty fifth at the public hearing to thank them there. Uh, and if you have occasion to talk with a commissioner, um, please feel, uh, please do uh, thank them for uh, their consideration. And I was even more pleased at the hearing I attended where they allocated our budget. At the possible promise of still more next year of, of making up a funding gap that had occurred over six or seven years. So that's just great news for the library and thank you to the commissioners.
Couple of sidebars to that story. I, I was kind of on uh, Jeanette Cudmore's blacklist. Uh, she blamed me for a deluge of letters that had to be copied and transmitted to all of the commissioners based on my letter to the editor. Tough bananas. Uh, I did send another one uh, to the newspapers publicly thanking the commissioners. And urging anybody that contacted them the first time to step up and thank them. Or any that, that lobbied the first time to step up and thank them. I haven't had any feedback from Jeanette on that yet, but we'll see. But I think the takeaway on this item here is very important because we right now, we have a very strong advocate on the board of commissioners. That person will not be there forever. And somebody has just announced that they are going to run against that commissioner. So while I would hope that we have sunny skies moving forward. I think we need to be very mindful and start formulating a what-if plan in case that just doesn't work out. And eventually it can't work out because he will decide tired of being a commissioner.
Well, the commissioner board is set for the next three years. There's not an election until then. So we've got at least a three-year window, but we are, already have plans for what we're going to do next year in terms of our ask. And, and Laura um, has been uh, already um, plotting, I'll say, um, with a smile. Um, ob- obviously we are going to um, be very careful as always in how we ask. But we, we will do a significant ask again next year with the expectation of not getting it all. But just reminding the commissioners that we have been um. The last seven years perhaps not treated completely equally and, and at the same time thanking them for starting to make that good.
And John, to your first point, I saw the letter that you wrote, the second one, and it was a lovely letter. So thank you for doing that. Did I what?
Thanks, Sam.
Yes, I did. Thanks, sir. Thank you. I sent them a private email to express my gratitude. I'm glad to reiterate that in this public forum. Uh, and it's very exciting and wonderful news. I think my question is also, when are we as a board going to be reviewing some draft budgets looking ahead for the library for the next year? At what point do we have those conversations?
You um, will see a draft budget in May. Typically you approve it in June. Um, and the reason for that is of course it takes effect in July. But we really don't absolutely know the number from the state until the governor's budget is finalized. And that typically is later. And officially, the county commissioner's budget may not be final until close to then. So we like to give you the absolute final amounts, but I'm not expecting either the amount that we're getting from the state. Which was presented um, as part of the governor's budget in January to change. And I'm not expecting the amount that the commissioners uh, give us to change. We have been notified by the county that the, the, of what the budget appeals. Time is, I don't think we're going to appeal this. Um, I think we're going to just say that, that's pretty darn good. If more money somehow were to appear, we might say, well, you know, we'd like to be included, but I'm not anticipating that's going to happen.
Here's the twenty fifth, the hearing for the.
Yes, the twenty fifth is the budget hearing. We've actually got two things scheduled that day. Um, as I'll review with you later, the morning of the twenty fifth is a library proclamation from the county commissioners. At the county commissioner room, uh, at nine o'clock in the morning, that meeting starts. And the proclamations typically come early, so think nine fifteen, nine twenty, but it's always best to be there on time. And then in the evening at six o'clock at Choptickon High School is the public budget hearing. And um. You as a citizen, much less a trustee, are welcome to come out and uh, sign up to say a few words. Um, I always do and um, we um. Were thinking, you know, we, we might have to call out our supporters to be at that meeting, but at this point we're letting everybody know, no, that's, that's okay. You don't need to do that. I had at least one young man disappointed um, as part of a, a scout project. He wrote a letter to the county commissioners and was expecting to come read his letter at the public hearing. And I, I told his mother who communicated with me, well, he can still come out and just say thank you. And that would be, that would fulfill his scout duty.
So I applaud your forward thinking on, on the budget. But is there an accompanying plan for schmoozing? So this thing doesn't drop on him like a brick?
Um, an accompanying plan for.
Schmoozing? Buttering up?
Yes, there is. Uh, a- as always, um, we um, will be very grateful to get the library proclamation and we'll speak that day, that morning. Uh, and the meetings are of course publicly uh, recorded and available on the county television station or YouTube about our gratitude for this. On that evening when I go, I always speak and um, occasionally have, have said, please give us more money. But in this case, we'll just be thanking them for their generous support. Uh, the county commissioners will be at the mobile library ribbon cutting and at least one will speak. And we are very grateful to them for that because they gave us the funding for the employees for it. So there'll be ample opportunities for the county commissioners to hear our gratitude. Um, if no questions on that, then a, a brief legislative update. We've got two things that move forward that are not specific to libraries that I'm concerned about, but just a brief um, overview of the library legislation. Most of it did not uh, move forward. There was some extra funding for the State Library Resource Center that died in committee. The regional resource centers, it passed, but with an amendment and John um, mentioned that. So basically Smurla does not have to really change the constitution of its board. Um, it was a little surprising because I cannot tell you the number of meetings we had. In, across the state about what the regional library bill would look like. And there was a lot of controversy and back and forth. And so finally we rolled it out and somebody said, no, never mind. Okay. The collective bargaining for public libraries bill died in committee and did not move forward. Um, the Enoch Pratt Free Library Capital Project Funding died in committee. The Aging Infrastructure Capital Improvement Grant Program, which would have called for four hundred thousand dollars a year in library capital funding. Unfortunately did not make it through. And I understand that that was a huge ask, but it would in twenty. Uh, in fiscal year twenty eight, when we've got some county money set aside, about three and a half million. Have allowed us to perhaps get as much as ten or fifteen million on our own to have tried to. Work on Lexington Park and, and Charlotte Hall Libraries. Um, we may try to bring that one back, but I'll certainly be applying for a, a grant, a capital grant that year of the seven point five million that the state does set aside. The library circulation records, um, which is just about the use of library records passed. There was just some clarifying language in there. Maryland is extremely strict on the use of library records. And they are considered absolutely private. They may not be shared. Even in the library, we can't just look up somebody's card. We have to have a reason for doing it. So um, that's really just a clarification and not really a big change. This is one going to be of interest for us, the Baltimore City Young Readers Program Expansion Alterations. This makes the Dolly Parton Imagination Library funding available across the state. You need to have a partner or at least a partner fund for that at fifty percent. We do have some, actually quite a few perhaps zip codes that would be eligible. It's aimed at low-income children, at least as this bill applies. And what it means is that children basically birth through age, up to age five, get a free book every month. And so we may reach out to Rotary Clubs or the Literacy Council or. Other agencies to see if we can find an interested partner and start applying for some of that money for some of these zip codes. In St. Mary's County where maybe the young children don't have as much benefit as. Other zip codes do in terms of getting literacy resources. So I'm interested to see how this rolls out and when the money becomes available and how we can start looking at applying for it. And um, so we'll see if we can't find some partners or um. If, you know, uh, as jealous as I am of Friends of the Library money, if they'd be interested in, in helping with that, I think it would be great for the community. So we'll, not making any plans now, just let's keep our eyes on that one. The bill about overdue library materials for minors did die committee, but that law is already in place and there's no real change. That was just some clarifying language. The overall educate, of the overall funding of libraries passed. But again, that was just language clarification. We're not going to get any more money, unfortunately. The two that I'm concerned about that are not specific to libraries are the. I- increase to fifteen dollars per hour is a minimum wage has been moved up. It is now taking effect on Ju- uh, January first of twenty twenty four. Uh, Belinda had already budgeted for that. So we don't think that's going to be a particular challenge for us. The other one is the Maryland Time to Care Act. Which is very well intended and I'm not criticizing that just so much as it's going to present possible budget issues for us. So the way it's going to work is starting October first, twenty twenty four, and they did move it back a year because it was supposed to start taking place this October. There's no opt-out on this. It's mandatory. Think of it as like a FICA tax or something. The employees will have to put in an amount, the employer will have to put an amount into a fund which will be administered by the state. It's going to be fifty fifty and that was determined in this legislative process. So the employee will put in fifty percent, the employer will put in fifty percent, and that's not libraries, that's everybody. So. Um, our primary concern, of course, is how much? Um, if it's a dollar a paycheck, so what? If it's fifty dollars a paycheck, that would be something we probably couldn't have funded. Um, so Belinda has, thank you, Belinda, looked more carefully into this. And what it says is it's one point two percent of the salary. For each employee. And has figured that. The total for the library right now would be about thirty five thousand a year. And the library share would be seventeen thousand. Um, at the maximum rate of one point two percent. We don't know that's what's going to be assessed to libraries. So we really don't know how much this is going to cost us, but I think we can. Uh, since we'll be having some increases in pay factor next year, the library share being. Um, and it won't start until October, so it won't be for the full fiscal year. But a yearly basis being seventeen thousand to twenty five thousand dollars. And no, the state is not. Giving out extra money to libraries for this. It will have to be factored into the state amount, whatever we get with any luck, that will be an increase. So we'll need to budget for that and just watch when the more specific. Information comes out about what our share might be of a percentage. Um, it won't apply to um, pages, apparently, but everybody else in the library. So how it will ultimately work is that um, this will be administered by the state. If somebody does not have paid time for twelve weeks of sick leave. They will apply to the state to be reimbursed out of this fund and it will take a year and a quarter to fund that. Um, many of our um, full-time employees probably already have that kind of coverage. I don't know how they're going to react to being told, guess what, there's another whack coming out of your page. Guess what, there's another whack coming out of your paycheck and we can't do anything about it. With any luck, they will think it's going to a cause good enough that that's not going to cause morale issues for us. Questions on that one?
So it's an unfunded mandate.
It is indeed.
And is the one point two the combination of both sides?
It's total, yes, it's our understanding.
We have point six.
That would be our, our share as an employer, yes.
And let me make sure I understand the purpose, it's to fund. Up to twelve weeks of unpaid leave?
Partial, partial, um, I won't say it's going to cover everyone's salary for that full amount, we don't know that detail yet, but yes, that is the purpose. So we, we do have many part-time employees who. Um, we give more generous leave annually than the state requires to our part-time employees. But it's PTO, it can be used for anything, but I don't think any of them. Have or under any plan that the state has mandated would ever get twelve weeks. That would build, you know, you'd have to work for years under what the state says, here's what you've got to do to get to that amount of leave. So one of our part-time employees wants to take sick leave, they would apply to this fund. And have up to twelve weeks, and again, it probably wouldn't cover their full amount.
So it's a stipend.
It would cover something, yeah, okay.
And it, they forecast it'll take. A year and some more. To get enough in the kitty to be able to launch it.
Exactly, yeah, so the launch would be starting, well, they're going to start collecting the money in October again of twenty twenty four. But starting January, um, I'm going to say second because probably not the first. Of, of uh, twenty twenty six, people would start being able to apply to the state for a reimbursement or a stipend.
This is going to get challenged on gender grounds.
Um, I, I don't know that I can comment on the legality or how it might be challenged. Um, but I will say that um. It passed overwhelmingly and the governor will sign it, so um, any changes now would be. A matter for the courts.
This is actually a version of FMLA from the state too. So you may qualify for Maryland's Time to Care Act if you don't qualify for FMLA. Although they're very similar, so. I'm not, not clear yet exactly. How specific or who might qualify. That doesn't currently qualify for FMLA. It, a little bit. But there is another stipulation in this that says, um, so FMLA covers twelve weeks. Of leave within a year, this will cover twelve weeks of leave. And if you have, if you need twelve weeks of leave for the birth or taking care of a child, that. Birth adoption part of being um, FMLA. And you also need twelve weeks because you are also sick. You can get up to twenty four weeks in a year. Of guaranteed safety for your job. So there's an extra stipulation, but it has to meet that requirement that you, you can only get twenty four if you. Have the birth of a child or adoption. And then you also need it for your own health.
So the wild card there then for us is that there could be a position vacancy for almost half a year.
This is true, um, another way would not be redundant, although again, we, not all the details of this are fully worked out as far as I can tell. Um, and another. Way it would not be redundant would be, let's say somebody gets FMLA for twelve weeks, but they don't have the leave to cover that. They could apply to this fund to cover up to twelve weeks and would it be twenty four weeks? That is, that is certainly possible, um, that would put an additional. Consideration, you know, if somebody's out for half a year, basically. Um, and again, it's very well intentions. And I'm, I'm not attempting to criticize this just so much as talk about the difficulties we may face in implementing it.
Yes, and there is one more thing that's not quite clear yet, but is in the amendments that were passed with this new version of the bill. And that is that they don't necessarily have to use. All of their current leave. Before applying for. The pay from this league. It's not clear, it's just the amendment. As far as I could tell, just stated something to the effect of that they may not necessarily have to use. All of their current leave from their company before using. Before applying for this.
So it, it could be, for example, if an employer as, as we do, and that's a state thing, it's not the library. Has personal time, vacation time and sick time. What this amendment might say is, all right, we're not going to make you use your vacation time or your personal time, your sick time you might have to use up. So we just don't know all these things yet, but I, I thought it best to tell you. I will say we've not told our employees about this. Because we just don't have the information. And I don't want to say, guess what, starting a year from October, you're going to be paying this much when I don't know. So. Um, there, there's no opt out if that's what you're asking, yeah, so we, we want as much information as we can to give clearly to our employees. So it's not unnecessarily to upset anybody.
Before we move on to action items, let's take a five minute break. Can we entertain a motion for a five minute adjournment?
I'll make the motion.
Alright, is anybody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed or abstained? Alright, we'll be back in five.
Everybody, Michael, please go ahead. Um, we're going to move over to action items at this point, and the first one is an addition, and that is trustee applications. Uh, the county received another one today. So uh, we are up to three applications for the position. Which would be running from July, starting this July for a five-year term. And Michael Dunn, you are eligible and I know that you've put your name back in. Um, so the process um, is that you do have to resubmit your name for reconsideration. And then we need to have at least three names that we forward to the county. The applications close on. April thirtieth, that gives you the month of May to look at the applications, to conduct interviews. And I guess my question for you is what process do you want to use? Before the pandemic, you were interviewing in person. Um, and I want to know if you want to continue that as a process or if you want to continue the Zoom interviews. I don't know how many applications we'll have, this is. At least during my time here, a, a, a low amount, although we have posted it on our website and. Um, you know, we've had as many as twenty four applications for one position. Um, so if you only have three, do you want to even conduct interviews? You could simply look at the applications and rank them. Um, but we do need to submit them by late May to the county because the county commissioners meet in early June. And they need the names ahead of time, so I just want to know how you'd like to conduct this process.
Is it possible to see the applications and then decide if we need to interview?
Yes, um, you, absolutely, um, and. I have shared the one we've had so far. Uh, with you, there's a link in your email, I'll be putting, the other one just came in this morning, I'll be putting that one in there. And you absolutely can see that and, and decide, you know, um, what, what you want to do, if you want to interview or not.
Any other thoughts about that process?
If we were to do uh, interviews by Zoom, I think I would need um, some sort of access to um, an account with some admin privileges.
Okay.
You know, I just have like a um, personal account.
Actually, that, the phone methodology that we have, you seem to go pretty good, except for didn't get eyes on.
How do you, doing phone interviews or? Uh, Zoom? They were Zoom interviews, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So is there, what is the action item we need to? I just wanted to know how you, how you wanted to conduct those, do you want to do them in person this year, do you want to continue with Zoom?
I see.
I see.
I, I think if we're doing them this year, I think we should go back in person, we're coming out of the pandemic. Crisis, and I, I think we should go back to in person as much as we can.
Alright, well, um, I will send out a doodle poll for you as my action item. Uh, for, call it um, the middle of May, um, because we did have some trouble this past um, time. With getting everybody. To be able to um, assess each candidate. And we want as much as possible for the interview process for every candidate to be the same. And to have a quorum of trustees at that, so let's try um. Whether in person or Zoom, and we don't have to decide at this point, but I'll assume you want to in person. And we can always can conduct, conduct them in Leonard Town. Um, and uh, I will get some possible dates out there to you, I'll include some afternoons and some evenings. And let's just see where we can get the most people out there. And um, then we'll just see how many candidates we have, and if we don't need to. You know, if you say, well, we've got three candidates, um, maybe we just. You know, you, you don't, you're not required to interview, maybe we just. Uh, uh, say, well, we're going to put forward all three, we are required to, and here's the order we want to see them in. But if you end up getting ten or fifteen, you, you would want to look at those, decide who you want to interview, and you don't have to interview everyone. Um, and just see who you uh, would, would like to uh, to interview then, thank you.
That I think takes care of that.
Thank you. Um, interns, um, last year, um, and, and I'm. You know, this was because we were trying to do a transfer of the, who could sign checks for the trustee account. Um, you authorize an intern but never paid the library for it, so the library picked up the cost for that intern. Um, this year I want to know, do you want to fund an intern for one of the libraries? It's three thousand dollars is the total amount, FICA, everything. Um, I will say that we have two current full-time employees who began their library careers as interns. And, and so it is. Um, in, and in, in the past, we've had still others, in many cases, it's a way to get somebody who's thinking they might like to work in libraries. To have hands-on experience, to be paid. And of course, it's also just a great help to our staff in our busiest time of the year, which is summer reading program. So do you want to fund an intern? Um, we would like to have three, so I will ask the friends if they would consider funding one, which they have done in the past. We may um, look at. The library budget and if all of the funds allocated for staffing are not spent, which I'm anticipating we may have some. Room there because of vacancy credit, you know, the position is open for two weeks while we're doing the hiring process. Um, if we can fund an intern from that, but the question for you as a board is, do you wish to fund one? And if so, are we, are we set to have the money actually come over?
So as the person who mucked it up last year, I couldn't figure out how to get Vanguard, Vanguard and I had an issue. Um, I can, I now have the capability of writing checks, I have the checks, like. Everything's all in order now, so we are set to fund an intern and sort of paying for it.
So, so your question then, thank you, is is just if you wish to fund one. Uh, I will say as, as we reviewed earlier today, that. Money was given to the board in order to fund this each year, so.
So uh, I think we can entertain a motion to fund an intern this summer.
I'd make that motion that we fund an intern for three thousand dollars.
I second.
Any comments or questions or? Any comments or questions or discussion?
Mike, when would you need the check?
Um, go ahead.
Generally, we ask for the check at the end of the summer, when we have the total amount that that, that when we have their time cards that we can then give back to you with the total amount.
But you'd be funding for three thousand dollars.
Yes, just a point of clarification for early. My verb wasting was to be applied to the account, not to the fact of having an intern.
Thank you, John.
That said, it looks to me math-wise like we may be hard-pressed to keep up the balance at three thousand, assume three thousand dollars a year going forward.
This looks like the account gained eighteen hundred, well, just the original account gained eighteen hundred in three months.
Yeah, but that's, that's true, but you can't count on that rate of return going forward. It will be years when the balance is actually back.
Fair enough.
That is true. All right, all in favor of the motion to fund the intern for three thousand dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstain? All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much, and our youth services librarians especially be very grateful to hear that news. Um, we've got two um policies to look uh to move forward to, and, and I will point out that um, uh, you do now have access to an online board manual in which all the policies as current exist. And so as policies change, I will work to update those documents and make sure that your online board packet has remained current. Um, the first is just looking at some promotion requirements, and we've created a couple of positions um that are going to be in red, and this is just to reward long-time employees who, who may wish to move up in the organization, but in many cases might not have the required degree or the number of years that it would take to apply for a different job. For example, you see the director position requires ten years' experience, five years in management. Um, that, that could be a stretch for many of our employees, also requires an MLIS. So what you're approving, what's in black exists already. Yeah, go ahead.
What's in red? Um, we didn't actually completely change everything. Some of them were added, but uh, we just changed some of the qualifications and made it a little clearer as to when our, our managers can promote and, and request promotions, because it was a little confusing in the past, so.
So basically, what you're looking at is in red, and, and as Belinda says, and, and Mary Ann and, and a team uh compiled this, so, and I wish to thank them for their work on this, um, is the sort of amount of experience and what it takes, and uh, the, the amount of, of sort of longevity and the experience and different qualifications for what it takes to earn a promotion, even if it's not a new position. So um, basically, you're looking at what's in red as changes or additions.
Comments or questions?
Just on the surface, the in-red on the last page, the outreach coordinator seems to be kind of high-level requirement there, or what I read into the term outreach coordinator. To me, that's kind of a scheduler. Do they really need the kind of uh credentials as stated?
This position is actually the head of outreach of our, our, the head of our outreach services. So I'm in charge of the mobile library and in charge of other outreach, so it's not just a scheduler. This, this is uh an administrative position. And basically, we give the same term coordinator to high-level positions that are not director in the library. So you'll see information technology coordinator, marketing communications coordinator, which is Laura, um, virtual services coordinator, which is Sarah, youth service coordinator, which is Jill. Um, they supervise um, other librarians, for example. That's Sandy's position, yes.
If there are no other comments or questions, I think.
I actually have a question. So I'm seeing that we're creating some additional tiers in some fields, and I think that can help with retention in a lot of cases, because people feel like their, their career is advancing, they have a place to move forward. Creating those tiers does typically come with a raise in a time when we don't really have, in my opinion, appropriate funding for the librarians we have with the tiers that we have right now.
Well, actually, we look ahead each year and see who might be eligible for a promotion, and do build that into the budget request. So we um, we like to give as much as we can to all the librarians, and next month you'll see the proposal, or at least our initial proposal for what that will be, and you will see that um, hmm, at least some of the coordinator and certainly the director positions are not going to be asking for a large raise, and in case the director is going to ask that his salary be kept the same, so that as much as possible may go to lower-level employees, but we would like to build promotions in for precisely the reason that you say. People do feel that they're moving forward in their careers, that they're being rewarded for their longevity, that the organization has room for them to grow.
Also, the very first stipulation, all promotions must meet the following criteria, that the library's operating budget allows for funding the promotion. So not everyone eligible gets promoted. Not everyone eligible um is recommended by their manager to be promoted, and then we also take into account the, the budget for the following year.
And, and there have been years, unfortunately, when we haven't been able to offer any promotions um based on the budget. This upcoming year, I, I, I think we will, and, and we, as I say, we, we ask ahead of time um about who's eligible and, and communicate with their supervisor and get letters of support for that. So I, I think that this is not going to, given everything we're going to do, and I know you haven't seen it yet, um, this is not going to disadvantage most employees. But I think that's a great question. Thank you.
All right, I think we can entertain a motion to approve this revision to the organizational positions and promotion requirements. So moved?
I second.
All right, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? All right, motion carries.
The next one is a local author donations and programs policy. Um, we, we do have an authors fair that we've done on a fairly regular basis, and we give author, local authors, a table at which they can sell their books and meet the public and uh invite people into the meeting room, and um, then we get a rather large number of local authors, and there, there are quite a few in St. Mary's who submit their books for consideration, and they just want the library to have them. And if we have, if we want to go buy some, that's fine too, but we basically have a policy set out just in light of the large number of requests that we get for how um to submit the work, um, the number that they may submit in a calendar year, the fact that they have to fit into our library material selection policy. So for example, we're not going to take a, a five-hundred-dollar textbook. Um, and you know, um, so basically, these are just general guidelines and, and policies for authors and including if they want to have a program for their book, um, which frankly, we don't always have the capacity to offer.
Can I request a revision? Under what we cannot accept, where you have spiral-bound books, can you put except Braille in parentheses there? Because a lot of Braille books are spiral-bound. It's very difficult to do a hardcover for those.
I, I certainly have no trouble making that as an addition. Um, I don't know that we've ever had one, but if that's the case, then we will happily consider taking them.
Ask why you don't accept the spiral-bound books?
They're difficult to keep on the shelf because what do you see on a library shelf? You see the spiral bound. So it's difficult to brand them. It's difficult to re-shelve them, and frankly, they often simply fall apart pretty quickly. Yeah, um, so especially if a young person's looking at them, very young person and out the page comes. So that's the why. Now, that said, we published a spiral-bound book, The Three Hundred Years of Black Cooking. Did we take those? Yes. Um, so um, so I, I would say that it's not specifically against spiral-bound, just so much as the difficulties of of displaying and maintaining those in the collection.
I know we have oversize. Do we have Braille in the collection at all?
Yes, we, we do have, we do have some Braille, yeah. Um, and um, uh, I will be presenting next month um some proposed grant applications for the upcoming LSTA cycle. I should point out that um, here's something that surprised me is that we offered a program with a sign language interpreter, and it filled up and specifically dedicated to that. So it's very expensive, and we're, we're increasingly offering the option for a program to have that, and what we're finding is that it's expensive to do. So we're looking at different grants that will allow us to support that and possibly even have dedicated programming in that way. So we are very interested in everybody in St. Mary's County being able to access the library collection, and I think a Braille edition here is, is certainly welcome.
Which brings up the question, if we're having a public event like that, and we don't offer Braille, does that put us at some risk?
Sign language, um, don't have a sign language. Yeah, it, it is a difficulty. Uh, we, if we get the request, pretty much have to, and we'd like to just offer it outright, but it's very expensive to do, and finding somebody to do it on a spur of the moment is very difficult as well. So what we would like to do, as I say, is offer a series or have the ability for any program to offer that as an option, and we'll be looking at the possible costs of that.
If we go back to the organizational positions and promotions, have you considered talking to staff about cross-training for sign language to become their own interpreters with an additional bonus or a bump up in?
We, we do have one staff member who can do that. Um, unfortunately, that person's a little um, i-is a branch manager, and, and so the ability to be out at programming is more difficult. Um, I would have to look at the cost of that, and I would think it could take time to become fluent in American Sign Language, and the training might um for, let's say, three people, one at each branch, could possibly exceed the cost of bringing people in. So I'm going to have to look at what that would be. Um, I think it's a, a great idea. Um, and I'd have to see if we have any. I, I'm sure we'd have staff would be interested, but it's more a question of what um uh, uh, of what we can do with that.
Uh, so I think bringing it to, back to the matter at hand, uh, I think we are ready to entertain a motion to approve this local author donations and programs policy with the amendments under the what we cannot accept section that uh with spiral-bound books, except Braille.
Move to second the, or I move that we accept the amendment.
Second.
Okay.
So we have a first and a second on the amendment. I move that we uh, accept the proposal as amended.
Second.
Thank you, John, for keeping us straight here. All right, all in favor of accepting the proposal as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstain? All right.
Well, moving forward, because we have one trustee who has to leave in fifteen minutes, I would like to move fund balance distribution and OPEP contribution forward before director's goals for calendar year, just because uh it is um of more immediate concern.
Yes.
Um, and so the um, first thing I'd like to look at is the mobile library funding and expenses update, um, which we looked at in part last month. Um, and you approved fifty thousand dollars um for the collection wrap and Wi-Fi case, the Wi-Fi case. The Wi-Fi um equipment comes with the vehicle as part of the contract, but this case allows it to be made portable. So if, for example, the mobile library, you do a stop, I, I'll just pick Cedar Lane as an example, um, and you want to take it into the building as opposed to have people come out into the library, mobile library to check things out. It could wheel carts in, you could wheel this in, you can check things out. It, uh, if, let's say we take the vehicle to the fairgrounds and we want to um have that run the library's table. It just makes it a lot more efficient in terms of the vehicle operation. So the collection is arriving, and thank you uh for that. Um, every, every day is Christmas for our mobile library team right now. There's a book after book after book is coming in, so our primary consideration is where to put them. Um, the outlet you see, um, I have put at zero because we have appealed to the county, and I believe that a funding will come through. So the remainder after the Crosby State Grant, which I will go to Baltimore and cry on their doorstep if I have to. Um, and the foundation funding, um, I, I will say that the foundation um is struggling right now. We had quite a few dedicated members for a number of years, but those people's life circumstances have changed. They have voted via email for the sixty thousand, uh, leaving them thirty thousand. I have, I, I, I can't talk about the what, but I have made a rather interesting request for a program in the fall that I think would help us revitalize the foundation. Um, but um for right now, I'm having trouble getting them simply to meet, but they have uh, uh, emailed that they will do that amount. So um, the remainder is forty-five thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, and whether it's this fiscal year or next fiscal year, um, I would like for you to vote to finish funding this uh for reasons that will become clear in a moment.
How about we have those before we vote?
I'm sorry, what, please?
How, how about we have those before we vote?
No, I would really like to see you just settle this.
Michael, I, I think we need a little more context.
Well, um, because that's going to affect the amount that we have in the fund balance, and we're next going to be looking at what the fund balance is and what to transfer into the OPEB if anything. So I think you need.
So whether or not the fund balance includes this forty-five thousand?
Yes, and uh basically, um, where's the money going to come from if not there? So I think you pretty much are obligated to go ahead and just finish funding this project.
Well, that's a business decision, but on the OPEB side, we actually have a fiduciary uh requirement.
Uh, I ask that we consider funding this now, and you can talk in a minute about that. I mean, we've got to pay for this thing. What are we just not going to? If, we're, we're just not going to fund it? I'm sorry, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, I think it makes sense if we find that this is a business decision, and on the other hand, we're stuck with. we're stuck with fiduciary decisions.
We'll talk about that in a moment, please. I don't think that you're correct on that.
So I thought last month we approved an additional expenditure for the mobile library. Where is this one coming from?
This would come from the fund balance. You voted, yes, fifty thousand from the fund balance last month. And we don't have the funding any other place for this. So you'd be voting for this would be the final amount to finish off the mobile library. That's what we owe on it.
When we had this conversation last month, did we talk about this forty six thousand remaining out there? Or what was there? Another source of money that might have been coming to fruition?
No, this is, this is all the the funding we've got. Now, there may be other funding that appears. What we've heard from the state is that if there's any ARPA funding that's not spent, they may give that to us, in which case that would be, as it were, a reimbursement, but we they've said they're going to do that, but we have no idea what the amount could be. It might be five hundred dollars. People try to spend their grant money.
Yeah.
So, you know, it could be a couple thousand, which is what I'm hoping for. But we don't know yet that that money is definitely appearing. Because if everybody spends their ARPA funds and we did, that was a two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. I made sure every penny was spent. So there may not be any funding there.
This amount was actually mentioned several times over the last three months and, um, you actually asked that we bring it forward again, um, in one of these meetings. I read, listened to these. It was, our fifty thousand request was for the rap, the, the, um, the I T and and the collection.
The collection, yeah.
State that there was still a remaining amount of the increase of the mobile library that we were going to be asking for. And and y'all specifically asked us to bring that number forward to you.
We did not know at that time, but it was.
Right. Well, we knew, but we hadn't put it into any details for you.
I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting. It does say, an additional a hundred thousand is expected to be needed from the fund balance for the final cost of the mobile library. That will be another budget amendment at another time. And then we moved into the discussion of the fifty thousand.
And so you see a hundred thousand, as we said last month, would cover this total amount and and leave some three thousand dollars left.
I know. Let me just say, you know, as as board members with the privilege to serve this organization, we have lives, careers, obligations, and are not in the day to day of the library with the same intensity and passion and dedication you all are. And so a little bit of a refresher, a little bit of context is helpful for us. Right? Just so that we can follow the thread and make sure that we're being consistent and thoughtful from meeting to meeting. Sometimes the the month-long gap between meetings seems like a long time. Sometimes it seems like fifteen minutes, right? But a little bit of table setting is helpful for us. So I I think we can entertain a motion, right? We have this number forty five thousand seven hundred ninety-eight. We can entertain a motion to transfer this from the fund balance to finish off payments for the mobile library.
So moved.
I second.
Any discussion before we vote? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
No.
Okay, thank you, John. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Um, and at at this point, Sharon, do you wanna leave or shall we another five minutes? Okay. All right, so you asked us to bring you the library's monthly expenses. And we have got that number for you. This on average is what it costs a library on a per month basis. That's three hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. Now, there might be a month it's a little less, there might be a month it's a little more. But if you look at our budget, basically, that's what we're looking at. Did you wanna say something?
Um, I just wanna point out that that is actually a line on the budget that has always been there. It's the far right column of the budget. Although the salary one was done by in pay periods, so I've adjusted that to month.
Okay, so that's, that's the number to run the library per month. Um, so what is our fund balance? Um, we don't have an official fund balance. This is money we've started aside. It's basically the money that's on hand in our different accounts. Five hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and one dollars. Um, now, for this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three that we're in right now, in order to balance the budget, and that's part of our budget document, as you'll see, sixty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the fund balance to guarantee balancing this year's budget has to come forward. So we need to take that money off the available amount. Yeah, there there is a, and might, there'll be sheets here that will ask Michael to sign. Um, the first was the forty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-eight. Um, then the second sheet gives you some more information. So in order to balance the budget, um, that money has to be set aside. Now, you've also already voted, although you haven't voted on a final budget for an amount that we will use to budget next year's budget. So we haven't factored that in. But know that you are gonna have to dip into the fund balance as part of next year's budget process as well. And that's something we've done every year. We've said, okay, we're gonna do this and here's what we anticipate coming from the fund balance. So even that figure is not total. Minus the mobile library total that you just, um, approved, we're at three hundred seventy-five thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars. Expenses for one month of three hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars. It's recommended as a general practice that you have two months of expenses, which you'll see, starting with the fund balance now, we don't even have that. But it is recommended to have two months. And there have been times when a county and state payment have been late. And Belinda has come to me and said, uh, we don't have the money for payroll right now, so we don't do any other expenses. And we have to wait. So after our expenses for the month, the fund balance for guaranteeing balancing the budget this year and the mobile library. And this includes the leftover from last year. And you said, what happens with money if it's not spent? Last year, we did not spend eighty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars primarily out of salary vacancies. And it also includes a forty-five thousand one hundred seventeen dollar healthcare insurance refund. So we pay a certain amount a month to get a health insurance for both our current and our retired employees. The retired employees are always taken care of. You're not gonna hear a single one of them complain. In some cases, a hundred percent of their healthcare costs are covered for people who were here. If you're at the library for fifty years and we have people who were, we're gonna cover your healthcare costs in retirement. Those employees are always taken care of out of operating funds. So what is left? Twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. And that is the amount that I would recommend you consider transferring to the O P E B.
Sorry, would you repeat that again?
What is left after the fund balance use? The mobile library expense, which we're going to have to pay this fiscal year, our next fiscal year. And our one-month expenses is twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars. And that is what I would recommend. Now, on the third sheet of that, what you'll see is what we've put into the O P E B since twenty fourteen, when we got an initial amount from the county. I will say that we have requested several times in the county budget hearing for more money for our O P E B. We get a certain amount that we put in the budget and you'll see that in your budget figures for what would go to the O P E B that year. In most cases, it is taken up or close to taken up by P A G O expenses. That is, we're taking care of the employees out of our pockets. The O P E B account, if funded ultimately, and we've been told by the actuary, think about funding at seventy-five percent. Nobody expects you to get to a hundred percent. And there are libraries in the state that have put no money into their O P E B. And there are whole counties in the state that have put no money into O P E B. So.
I don't view them as guiding lights for how we should be thinking about this.
Well, I'm fine with that, but I will tell you, this is what we have for an O P E B. You notice that we've put three thousand twenty dollars in so far this year. That's because we had this separate little O P E B account that figured what was that ever there for? Nobody could ever determine that. We just rolled that into the larger account. So that's the money that, right now, we have on hand that I would recommend you consider transferring.
I thought that thirty thousand was the rebate on the healthcare.
Um, yes, but the amount that we would put in is not dependent on that. That was, that was forty-five thousand dollars as a refund this year.
Well, I'm getting mixed signals because it seems to me, and looking back historically, there, there has been articulated, oh, that's the money that we can use.
No, historically, what we've done is a board, and we've done that a couple times here. But historically, what we've done is every November, we get the, um, annual report from the auditor. This is what our audit says. Is there any money left over? And that's what we've put in based on your vote. And not every year you'll see have we put something in. In some cases, we didn't have a, an excessive budget. In other cases, it was determined that that was not the appropriate expense.
What, what was your number, please, again, on the unexpended portion in last year's budget? Was it eighty-eight something?
It's, yeah, it's eighty-nine.
It's on the skirt page, Chuck.
Well, I'm looking at the June thirtieth, um, draft here, and it says that the unexpended portion was thirty-three, four eighty-two. I'm looking at page five.
Of what, please? Yeah, but we have gone to our, um, accountant. And we gave you last month, but it's not here, a complete rundown. And frankly, the audit includes so many different numbers, including rents and depreciation, that this is the number that we have from our accountant of eighty-nine thousand of exactly what the income versus the outgoing is.
So if we have that now, are you saying that the audit that we submitted was not actually correct?
No, I'm saying it's just based on so many factors. Go ahead if you have something to say, Belinda. It's based on so many factors. This is the actual accounting from our accountant.
Right. The audit also includes our books, like the amount of our books are worth. It includes depreciation, it includes, um, the liability of our, of, of our vacation and sick time pay, as well as our liability to the, to our, our retirees. But it also includes numbers that aren't actual money. It's just portions of it. So it doesn't include like what we are taking in, putting out. So the profit and loss statement that we sent, we gave to you last month was simply how much money we took in and how much money we spent out and what the difference is. And the difference was that we kept, we took in eighty thousand dollars more than we put out. So that's what went to the fund balance and that's what we have.
For this audit, I've got it highlighted here.
Yeah, but we've explained to you that the audit includes, for example, three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars that the state puts towards retirement funds um, that we never see. It's not our money. So it's not an accurate picture of what actually comes into the library and what actually goes out of the library. And that's what our accountants have verified and Belinda has worked out for you.
Also, and I'm, I'm not sure I'd have to look at the audit to see what you're looking at, but thirty-three thousand dollars is approximately what we didn't take from the fund balance last year that we had put into our budget. So we requested to use thirty-three thousand dollars from our fund balance last year and we did not.
I have to leave, but noting that we still don't have the Crosby Grant for that fifty thousand dollars, my recommendation to this board would be to not move any money at this point to make sure that we have that balance available until that fifty thousand comes through.
Got a motion?
Sure, yes, I would move, we move zero, or we, we move zero dollars to O P E B for this month.
Are we under a deadline? Do I need a second before asking?
If you, if you wish to second it, you may now.
I'll, I'll go ahead a second. Uh, the second that? And, because my question is, are we under any kind of deadline?
Well, um, Sharon has to leave.
We're talking about O P E B.
Oh.
Is there a deadline to move it?
No, um, there is no deadline to move this. You could authorize that movement at any time. The question would be, you need to decide what you would want to move and what the balance is and and what you think is good.
So we could decide that in June?
You, you could decide to move nothing now and and, uh, table the matter and say this will be continued later.
But for accounting purposes and actuary purposes, the quote deadline is June thirtieth to whether we do or don't put money in.
But you can put money in any time. It doesn't even have to be this year.
For this fiscal year.
And when do we? When do we expect to hear about the Crosby Grant? The final word on that?
Well, the final, I mean, June thirtieth would be the drop dead. Um, and I am, I promise you, I am pestering these people. Um, so we will definitely know June thirtieth. If, if they just say, well, the money got approved by the governor and it was in the budget, but we just can't find it. And I hope that that's happened. Um, I will be asking delegate Crosby to follow up with me.
So we have a motion on the table to not make an O P E B contribution now, uh, but to hold off. But table it for later this fiscal year. All right, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Table it, yes, aye.
Okay, any opposed or abstained? All right, the motion carries to table this decision.
All right, well, we'll come back with you the same figures next month. Um, that's it. Uh, no, I take that back. I'm sorry, sorry, Sharon. Thank you so much for your contributions today. We have the directors', um, goals, and I did modify those slightly. Um, to take off the revitalization of a tactical plan. We're getting to the point where we need to do that for next fiscal year, and we don't have a new strategic plan. But you notice that a strategic plan is still going to be something that the director has set as a goal for himself. Um, instead of that, um, we are going to investigate the feasibility of a new payroll provider. Uh, our current payroll provider, Paychex, um, costs us some fifty thousand a year. And we want to see if for the same level of service, we can find a payroll provider for maybe a small payroll provider. Paychex has gotten much larger than when we originally contracted with them some five years ago. You hear them advertising on, for example, NPR. Nothing wrong with advertising on NPR. It's just that they, they've gotten much larger. And we wonder if we can't find a payroll provider that will give us that or less. So, um, the goals I have set for myself are just to oversee the fiscal year twenty-four budget process to achieve library goals for an increase. Um, and I think we can count that one as done. Um, the library strategic plan, which will take place in the fall, uh, investigative grant for accessibility services, um, there's that. And then, um, we will have one possible other grant that you'll hear about next month. Um, oh, we'll see the mobile library implementation and ensure service by September twenty twenty-three. Work towards developing and putting legislation, a new version of an ebook law. I shared with you, I believe, a site that has come forward that includes work from me. Um, that is not only a statewide, but nationwide. And I do have a draft of that bill. And we will, as Maryland Library Association, work forward on that. Um, ensure implementation of the Palace app. I'm working with, uh, the other two counties on that. That is the mobile library app that the state provides. I'm sorry, the, um, digital content library that the state app that the state provides and that, um, I hope to implement by, um, as a, I won't call it a substitute. and that I hope to implement by, as a, I won't call it a substitution, but a, a better option than overdrive. We had discussed last December, moving forward with asset strategy. And then we had decided by next December that we are going to look at who manages the OPEB and then the, the payroll provider. And then I just have some general ones. I will say that one of those advise and assist F and L Foundation and Foundation Develop Stock Donation Option. I can't engage to do anything with the foundation specific right now because I can't even get them to meet. So that being the case, I will continue to advise and hope to revitalize the foundation. But I don't think it's reasonable for me to say I'm going to do this when I'm not certain that I'll have a board that's meeting, and we'll need to find new board members and move forward with that. So those are what I have set as my goals. And then there was a sort of suggested additions to those. And
On the second page, I will take one out that I put in. Second page, it refers to improve the responses. And I use the word annually. And that does not happen annually on the employee survey. So scratch through that.
And I'm going to say that you can, from my recommendation, do a straight up or straight down on all of these. And I would recommend a straight down because there are some that frankly, I consider to be impractical and inefficient and an overreach from what the board's position is, is allowed by the state law into interference with operations, which are my purview. You can do a straight up or straight down on all of them and bring them back individually, or we can go through them one by one. But I do not recommend accepting all of these.
I, you know, this, this task has been on the table for months and months and months now. We're four months into the twelve-month calendar year. I appreciate some of the revisions that have gone into the director goals that Michael has presented. And John, I appreciate all of the work and effort you have put in for these suggested additions. I do have concerns about how specific they are, and I think, I think these fall more under tactics that Michael and his team may pursue if they want to. But I, I do think we need to be, remain at a high level here. And so my inclination would be for us to move forward with, you know, this front page and this front page only of the library director goals. My inclination would be to approve those and then move forward.
I agree. I think these are too, too micromanaging.
Yeah, they look like something that you would have from a, you know, like from a staff level, from a supervisor to subordinate rather than the
Right. It's not, it's not, we need to be more
Well, my intent with this list is, it was in response to Michael's original thing, and he said, any others, question mark? And so I created this list for consideration by the entire board. Okay? I don't know how much, if any of it, you've had a chance to look at or reflect upon or whatever. But we are not a working board. We are an oversight board. And I think part of our oversight obligations is to identify areas or places where we would like to see either a shift in the direction we're going or to outline new directions, which might be appropriate for taking us down the road in incremental steps to a better place or to head off future problems. I would not expect all of these to survive the lighter day. But I do take exception with your objection to the fact that this is outside the board's purview. I think
I didn't say all of them, or I said many of them are. And I would argue, looking at state law, that in fact, most of them are an overreach. You delegate library operations by law to the director. And frankly, a lot of these are simply busy work and something that I think are an overreach that you do not have oversight of.
Well, let's take our good fortune with the budgeting. And I used, and they use the term, we'd like to go forward from here. That was the commissioners. I applaud that. But let me rephrase my statement from earlier. What can we be doing to suck up to all of them so that we can go forward next year? Because we're not going to be the only one with our hands out. And I can tell you, because I sat there all day long, the argument for we save people's lives and we protect people's property, that's a hands-down winner. There's no ifs, ands, or buts when it comes to funding them.
And John, I, I think that concern is addressed under successful library advocacy through community involvement, right? I, I think, I think that does capture, I mean, we all agree, we need to build relationships. We need to make sure this is sustainable. I do not think we're going to reach a meeting of the minds today with you, John, and you, Michael, and that is okay, and the world will keep turning, right? I think at this point, perhaps we are ready to entertain a motion to approve these library director goals for twenty-twenty-three as written. And we can kind of save the tactical conversations for another day.
Is that a motion?
I said, if anyone, we can entertain a motion.
I almost make that motion that we accept this page, top page, this one.
Yes.
Only.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
No.
That said, you'll see that one of these has already been done. I'm not saying that I will not take them into consideration. Simply that I think that going through them one by one would be an onerous process and involve me objecting in many instances and explaining why. Which is not to say that, yeah, it's not to say that I will not look at these and carefully consider them. And I appreciate the spirit with which they are offered as trying to make the library better.
Well, I think somewhere, and I don't know if it was in this, apparently not, but I thought our one, two, three rating system the last time was underwhelming. I would like to see one be exceptional, two, three be in meet standards. I'm sorry, three meet standards, four needs improvement, and five is whatever label we want to put on it. We did not have the ability to slice and dice without using decimals.
Right.
And I don't know how many people did or didn't. I didn't. It was either a one or two or a three. Okay, so I'd like a little more granularity in the rating process.
Yeah, someone new, someone new. Okay, we can certainly do that. I think, yeah, we can definitely improve on the process from last year. All right. Michael, back to you.
Actually, we are pretty much done with business. I do need to sign a couple of forms for us here, or at least one. So what's left? Our next meeting is May nineteenth at Leonard Town Library. We hope we're still going to let you know about that. Our backup location is here. Dates to remember, book sale starting today for members. If you're not a member, go join and you'd be a member. Fifteen dollars, what a bargain, tomorrow and Sunday. And then the friends will be taking what's left up to Baltimore. They've got a place where they can that, that buys many of the books that may not sell. On April twenty-fifth, we've got two things, the Library Week Proclamation, and that's at nine in the commissioner's room, and the public budget hearing at Chopticon High School at six-thirty PM. May second is the date by which any budget appeal is due, but I don't think we're going to be working on those. I don't know why it says do April twenty-fifth. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Don't know why it says that. I think we had a week after that. What, I don't know why I've got that July twenty-fifth there. It should have been taken out. The mobile, I'm sorry, that's, that's the mobile library ribbon cutting. So that's a hoped-for date. Tech Ops is going to get back with us after their meeting and let us know if they still think they can deliver in June or even early July. We'll have to see if we can get the rap on. So I'm, I'm thinking I may have to move that, but I'm still hopeful. So those are the upcoming dates.
Thank you, Michael. So we have run out of time for discussion items. Any new trustee business folks want to introduce or put on the agenda for next month?
Yes, I'd like to give next month, if you want, an update on where we stand on dealing with the OPEB transfer.
Excellent. Thanks, John. We'll cover that in May. And I hope folks can make it to the Library Week Proclamation on the twenty-fifth. It'll be nice.
I mean, yeah.
Yes. I think we are ready to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Woo, good times. Thanks, everybody.